At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, June twenty ninth, twenty twenty one meeting to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Stainis and myself, Jack Wood, supervisors. Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck from the Auditor's Office. Luann Goke, our Administrative Assistant. And first on our agenda this morning is. David Brier and first item is a public hearing on proposed ordinance number two ninety three slash sixty eighth street parking restrictions. We had any calls or comments? So we'd open the public hearing at this time?
I have not.
Um, I have not had anything. Any other comments?
Anything from the public?
For the able to figure out if they can do any more parking in some of the grassy areas.
That would be a decision they would have to make. And get probably permission from the upper state.
Yeah.
So.
I would make a motion for a second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing on ordinance number two ninety three. All those in favor? Motion carried.
All we have to put in there in a minute that we second hearing.
Well, they didn't approve it. We just closed the public hearing, so I don't know what.
Unless you want to resend it.
No, I just.
Till next week and have the second hearing. Cause you've just closed the public hearing.
And we're not proving anything yet.
Okay, then, uh, first item that I have is an entrance permit for Delana. Luetz and South Court Township, section thirty four on Seventh Street. It's a class D residential permit on the north side. Of the road. Recommend approval.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the residential plus the residential entrance permit. For Delana Luetz on the south of, south or. South Fork Township, get my teeth in. Section thirty four. All those in favor? Aye, aye, motion carried.
And the next item on the agenda is a railway utility. Permit for the Dressler subdivision. Applicant is the Eastern Iowa Regional Utility Service Systems. They're looking to extend water main on three ninety fifth and three ninety sixth avenue. Uh, this project will result in detour. Uh, with rerouting traffic around the project, but still allowing local traffic. So residents will be able to get into their. Residents. Uh, project entails open cut on the west side of the road. To put in the watering about six, six and a half feet deep. Uh, they will jack underneath the pavement where they cross the county road. Duration of the project for three ninety six segment is about ten working days or two weeks. But they'll be working on the west side of that road and on three ninety fifth should go quicker in about a week and a half. Uh, so they'll have open trenches and trucks hauling and bringing in gravel. So they're proposing a detour around on, I think that's three hundred and eighth street there.
When do they propose to do this, Dave?
This just came in the last week.
So we don't know the timeframe. Or does Iris know this timeframe?
The project.
It was coming out, but no.
The project will be wet and fall in the next year, so it's.
I guess my concern was the camping season would really block up Spears Creek and propose that.
Yeah.
At this time, you know, if we can do it later in the fall or spring, I know wasn't conservation also.
Or putting a trail on town.
Yeah, parks the people doing the trail at the same time.
Well, they come in after.
Well, yeah, it would be on top of right away.
So are we saying that conservation should talk to their? Project manager on this?
I'm not so sure it was.
That's Iris.
Conservation or.
Conservation doesn't really have anything to do with this part of it.
But the water. Yeah, Iris is, the water project is Iris.
Iris being Eastern Iowa.
Rural.
Rejoining utilities.
Service system.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they haven't let the contract get. So it won't happen for.
If, if at all this year, it may be. Likely to go in twenty twenty two is what he said. Let go of the business fall.
Well, even with the camping, they can come around from the other side.
Really, but I think it's from the limit.
I would think most people would come on fifty second on the trailer. You know, if I'm coming to the campground. That's how I would do it. I mean, are most of those folks repeat snowbirds coming from Arizona?
Most of them in the offshore unit are probably more permanent. I mean, they're year round. Okay, this Spears Creek area is more weekend. Yeah, whoever gets there.
Alright, good, yeah.
Whoever gets there, gets there.
Well, it's two weeks. I mean, it'll be.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, have to work on that. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I would make that motion. Do you need action on that? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I would make that motion to move forward with that.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the. Right away utility permit for Eastern Out of Regional Utility Service Systems. All those in favor? I'm motion carried.
Okay, we did the parking restrictions. The only other item is setting a. Public hearing schedule for reducing the speed limit on three ninety fifth avenue. Uh, from thirty five to thirty in segments and then. The city of Bellevue would like a segment that is within the county jurisdiction to go at twenty five miles an hour. Which, you know, we can support. It looks like from three hundred street south to fifty. Highway fifty two could be posted twenty five. That's where the. Bike head crossing is and there's the tight curve there. So twenty five would not be unreasonable and then.
Three hundred is the first one that goes to the east of.
Correct.
So what's your thoughts, Dave? Have you been up in that area? You know how that lays up there? Cause. I mean, that's residential, a lot of traffic again because of camping, golf course. Um. What's your thoughts on doing it from the retracts up to fifty two, which is about.
Twenty five.
Yeah.
That, that's.
The thing is, there's no sidewalk along there. So they walk on that road. They ride their bikes on that road. I know there's probably. Five bus stops from there to the corner. With them residential homes there. And I guess my thought is if you put it to twenty five, they're gonna go thirty anyway. I don't know.
Well, I mean, we, we did collect some speed data out there. Wasn't all encumbering speed data, but the. Average eighty fifth percentile speed was thirty miles an hour. So that was what. You know, I was comfortable with recommending because at that point you get pretty good. Compliance. You lower it to twenty five, which you certainly can do. And it wouldn't be, you know, like lowering the speed limit on, on highway fifty two to twenty five would be kind of silly. It's whether you get good compliance. You could do it to twenty five and it becomes kind of an issue for the Sheriff's Department to enforce. At thirty, somewhat self enforcing. Already traveling there at that speed. You can always lower it to twenty five in the future if that's.
Well, the future where the trail will be going in next year. So that'll get that traffic off that road.
Well, yeah, that hopefully that trail will make a difference. Like I said, there's no sidewalk on either side and then the, the locals do walk it a lot.
It is a residential district, right?
Yeah, I. I would think it'd be okay to drop it. I really do. Just for saying, I, I don't think it's gonna make a difference either way.
I think you can put this sign up there, but it's gonna be enforced.
Right.
I mean, for putting it up for the other section, probably just.
It's, it's basically your call. I mean, I was just looking at the, the data and I will tell you, I went back and forth.
Are you comfortable with it if we did?
I, I could support twenty five.
Yeah. So if we do that, we would have to push this back? Is that what we're saying?
Well, it's the, well, I, I, well, and I don't know how it would work if, if you haven't put anything in the paper yet. We just need to get the language right for the notice, right?
Right, the public, the notice of the public hearing has been done. And that was in thirty days. We need to pass the ordinance and.
That language needs to be revised because of the. Going to thirty, but go to twenty five, the notice would be.
Well, it would have to be revised either way, even if it went from three hundred.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there, I don't think there's no, it's not a burning item to, to. Address, you know, go Bellevue once.
And I don't think it's gonna be a problem for anyone. I mean, like you said, with the campground and the housing there, there's a lot of children around there. And I get the most residential's thirty, is it or thirty five?
It's thirty five now. But traffic is doing about thirty now. There are always outliers who. No matter what you do, they're going to do what they say.
I can see, like you said, coming south, they gotta stop anyway, so they shouldn't be really speeding down. And they really shouldn't be going trash and that one.
So a consensus in twenty five, the full length.
It is to me, but I.
I'm only one with that.
I think for safety, it's, I mean, maybe make them hesitate when they see the. Number twenty five and then look at their speedometer and see they're going thirty five.
It's a rural, I mean, it's a suburban. Segment, neighborhood residential.
I'd say twenty five, and if people are unhappy, they'll let us know.
Okay.
Or they'll get a ticket.
Alright, so we will take care of that and it'll be on the future agenda item and. And that'll make.
So we need to make a change in the published notice? Or do we need to change the public hearing? Or we just need to change the language?
Did something during the other one, another public hearing, a second hearing next week?
Yeah. If we need to take action on that, though, if we need to move forward, I guess it's not like you said.
Well, we can check with Sarah and see what Sarah says and we have to.
I think your language of the notice has to be correct because otherwise, you know, I didn't get involved because, but you told me the wrong thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the language.
I think you're probably right.
Notice has to be correct.
Yeah.
That's the case we hope to change to next week.
No, which I.
We'll have to push it ahead.
Which is funny.
Oh, right.
Yep.
You bet. With that being said, can we set a new public hearing date?
I think you could set a date. We just had to make sure the language is right. So if you pick, you know, middle of July, meeting then.
Well, whatever's in our timeframe, yeah.
Exactly, whatever means the posting timeframe.
Is that four and twenty or is?
I think it's four and twenty. I have to. So I'll work on that while you guys are talking.
So being it's on the agenda, we can make a motion to change the public hearing. To the required date with, with the mortgage.
We can just table, we can make a motion to table action until we get the. Everything that we need to do done to set the public hearing.
There. Okay, I made a motion, so you'll have to act on it either way.
I'll second it. Is your motion to table?
Motion was to move forward with it, but. You can.
Modify whichever.
Yeah. Set the public, set the public hearing. For a timeframe and with the modification.
Well, I'm thinking, so what I wrote down is you want to, your motion is to set the public hearing for this proposed three hundred and ninety fifth street. So we didn't, I mean, we just need to see what our.
Isn't in the time allotted and.
With, um, going to twenty five miles an hour. I'm good.
Make sure it's, I have no, I have a terrible.
All is in favor? Motion carried.
Terrible.
Propensity to getting streaked behind everything.
Last item, discussion possible action on the public hearing on the ninety eighth street parking restrictions.
He had, we had that ready to start at that second hearing.
It was down there twice.
Yep.
Well, on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Agenda. And we have it again, the second hearing.
No, no.
We already had the public here, so we don't need to have another public.
We have a public hearing on the thirty ninth, three to ninety fifth street. We need to set that public hearing. Did you pass? So the question is, did you pass ordinance number two ninety third, the ninety eighth street parking restriction?
No, we didn't. All we did is add the public hearing and closed it.
That's right. So you're having your next hearing on July sixth at what time?
Nine o'clock, same as this week.
We'll get it.
Alright.
Yep.
Okay, are there any visitors or citizens that are wishing to address the board? Hearing no one, we will move on to. James Cracker, Crocker and Andrew Long.
Morning, Jim.
Good morning. I just wanna take a few minutes today to introduce a newest member of our corrections staff. And. Just step on up. Okay, this is Stefan Collins.
Morning.
Stefan's parents are Cynthia Harris and Larry Collins and, uh. Stefan lives in Macocota. Before that, he lived in Maywood, Illinois. He graduated from Proviso East High School in twenty nineteen. Um, at, at that location, he was with the Navy Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. And he graduated from that program as Cadet Chief Petty Officer. Then joined Bellevue Homeland Security and Emergency Management at the age of eighteen. And he served three years with that department. Stefan is also a member of the Macocota Fire Department. But we're, uh. We're just tickled to have him. Um, he's a, a great asset to our team. Great.
Welcome. Okay, so I want a handkerchief.
Yeah, I want to get some pictures.
We're gonna get, get some pictures, so we'll come around this way. You would start with me and then you can progress to Muska and family.
Alright, got it.
Would you like to introduce your family?
Uh, yeah, I have my mom.
Thank you, thank you.
I have my mom Cynthia and.
Circle, circular white.
Am I taller than he is?
Yes, you are. You're balder than me.
I need to get me a step stool over here.
You know, let's get something with, uh.
Someone with mom and her family might want a picture of you and.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Oh, absolutely. And I can send these to you as well. This is our way of tricking you to all be working at the jail. Very nice. We're gonna do one with that off.
Yeah.
Perfect. Got it. Thank you. Anything for me today?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, guys, for your time. Appreciate it.
Well, Lisa, do you want to take care of your business?
Mine will take some time.
Well, we got ten minutes.
That's fine if you want. I just.
Do you want to come up?
Whenever you want.
Yeah.
We need to give coffee break in between.
You see that end of the year?
Yeah.
Beginning of the year, what do you want to call it?
It's the end of the new beginning.
Alright.
That's a good way to put it.
Is that your own person name? Or do you hear that sound?
But can you repeat it again?
Okay, this time we're joined by Luann Goke, our Administrative Assistant.
Good morning. We'll start with the calendar. Um, two o'clock this afternoon, um, Jack will be in West Ateen for a Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO meeting. And at six thirty tonight is a Watershed Management Authority Special Meeting by Zoom for Larry. And the next thing on the calendar is Monday, July fifth. Uh, the court also be closed that day for the, for the July holiday. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, July sixth at nine AM. Okay. The big news, the big business today is fireworks permits.
Tis the season.
Tis the season. I have three to approve and then I have. Actually, two that want to change the date, which we have not done before. So we'll start with the three that are easy. Um, the first one is for Matthew Franzen. At thirty six, five forty, Highway sixty four Preston and his is for July second. The second is for Brett and Stephanie Evanarius. At fifteen, six forty seven, Highway fifty two in Bellevue, and that's for the fourth of July. And Zachary Shig at thirteen, seven thirty eight, Highway sixty four in Macocota for the third of July. So I'm looking for approval of those three permits.
Motion to approve. Second, I did have a couple of questions about, uh. One of the permits and I called the information on the permit and was explained very good to me and. His neighbors are all well aware because there was some livestock next to it. Concerning, we had some issues last year. Yes.
Okay, with a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And we have issued a permit to, um, Larry Divit, um, but the daily's permit is July the fourth and his wife says they want to do it on July third.
No, sorry. No way in the world we're gonna let them. I didn't either. Mine, mine didn't come in the mail.
I know, it's in the mail, isn't it?
Right.
Responsibility was it to put the right thing on.
So is this a, do we just need to approve a July third? Is, is the application changed?
Yeah.
I think that's all.
I would second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
It didn't get in trouble on the fourth of July weekend, right? So.
Well, no, I, I wouldn't say that. I think you can find a watch and get in trouble.
Oh, no. Fireworks.
Maybe the fireworks would be more explosive.
Okay, uh, the other bit of business I have this morning. Um, the Jackson County revolving, revolving loan fund committee. Uh, they're, they're current, um, members of that, their term expired on May fifteenth. So, um, I called Matt Speck and said I need the news because they are chosen by the banks. And so what I've given you is a copy of the new list. Most of them are reappointments. Um, I think, um, John Milk is his name. He's one of the new ones. That'll be on that committee. And also, um, Dean Wogan Bush. So we appoint this, we, we don't appoint it, we approve it as a list. I'm looking for a motion to approve the list. Of the members of the revolving loan fund committee.
Second. And second to approve the list for the revolving loan fund committee. So they don't have to be gender balanced.
They do not. Each, each bank that's in the, the group chooses their own representative for that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Right, I think that's it. Thank you.
Next on the cutting block is. Becky Chapin.
Why not? I heard Jim and them in the hallway. I was like, oh, I better go. Good morning.
Good morning, Lauren.
Alright, just a couple of things today. The first thing is, um, I touched base briefly last week on the Nihart Service Agreement that I was going to present today. Um, the Iowa public, all Iowa public bodies of self insured healthcare groups are required to. Certified to the Iowa Insurance Division that the pool of money they pay their claims from is of sound mind, basically. Um, in order to meet the certification, you have to contract with a third party actuary. I reached out to Nihart. We contract with them every two years to do other post employment benefit reporting that state officers require. And obtained a quote from them. Services of this nature can run from one thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. They have submitted a proposal for twelve hundred dollars to complete this assessment and actuarial for us. Um, they as well will prepare for required certifications that have to go to the Iowa Insurance Division. So unless you guys have any questions on that, um, or want me to reach out to anybody else, I would, um, ask for a motion to approve the service contract and for the terror person to sign. The other thing I have is our workup renewal, which I am pleasantly surprised with. I had to assume based on our claims over the last few years being extremely low that we were gonna go in a good direction with them and we actually went in an excellent direction with our workup renewal. Our premium is actually down ten thousand dollars from last fiscal year, which has to do with a lot of factors. Um, the first thing is that, um, IMWCA takes our. Um, payroll, which is, that's about five point five million and they say based on your class codes, you owe one hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars worth of premium. And then they start to apply these discounts that take into a lot of factors, including loss control as the main one. They give us an experience, a good experience credit of fourteen percent, um, a longevity credit of eight percent. Those are standard. But the big numbers come from our actual experience as a group and within the whole pool itself through IMWCA. Um, just a quick summary on that, we were charged one hundred and seventy seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty eight dollars. However, after all of the discounts, we will only pay forty nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars of that premium that the pool could charge us. So there's some huge factors in there. Last year, our discounts were fifty, um. Oh, yeah, about fifty eight thousand. Um, so we paid a little, we paid about ten thousand dollars more on premium last year, but our experience rates have gone down quite a bit. Our experience modification factor that we're gonna pay this year is point six seven percent of that hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Which has to do with our group in itself and what they expect our exposure to be based on payroll and what our claims actually were over the last three years. Then they will get our experience and our payroll within the whole group since it's a twenty, or not a twenty eight, but it's a community or a. Local government pool of money and then they only charge us point eight percent of that premium. Um, for our pool rated claims. So our claims are definitely going in the right direction. We had a few high claims four and five years ago. They consider the last three years claims within most of these numbers that, um, I presented. So our claims are definitely going in the right direction, we had a few high claims four and five years ago, they consider the last three years claims within most of these numbers that, um, I presented. So we're going in the right direction, I will definitely get an email out to all the other departments now that we have the renewal and letting them know. What a good job everybody's doing as far as safety and the initiative goes, because they take all of that into consideration.
Absolutely.
I think you also need to include in there Becky something about our safety, you know, we haven't had a safety meeting.
Yeah, and that's, I was just gonna bring that up, so between myself and secondary roles, we did budget for contracted safety consultant services with Mark Schaper. And I was thinking this would probably be a good time here after the first of fiscal year to get Mark in with David and Stacy and probably I and then have him present to the board, um, because they do consider that as well, I mean, we definitely save the premium to offset having those services and it can only continue to get better with, um, that consultation, so.
Anytime we can decrease our premium by ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's, that's a bonus.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, and you have to remember, they can charge us that peer premium, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And there are some counties in the pool that do pay that peer premium, so we're very fortunate that we've got.
Amen. What that we work at too, if departments work at it and, and you're working on it, that makes a difference.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Be aware.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. Uh, so nothing to do on that, it is what it is, they will send the bill if they have an order to the land, she will pay that forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, the last thing I had was just to me, I, I'm, I know you're aware that our health administrator has accepted a new position, um, she has resigned and planned on the Jackson County. Um, I have coordinated the advertising for the board of health, it has hit all the papers, it's online. Um, their initial deadline for applications is July ninth and they're going to, um, look at them then. I don't know, I have not been in contact with the board of health at all. Um, it's my understanding they're working with Kimberly Tevin interim in place of her, on her departure date, which I believe she told me was the thirteenth of July. So just so you're aware, I don't know if there's been any communication with the board of health between this board or not. If you need to do anything.
We attempted to have a meeting of the minds, but that did not happen.
So if you need me to do anything, um, basically I work with Kimberly, she gave me the advertisement that the board of health wanted and I went and got it out there, so I have not been in community, I have not communicated with the board at all, so if there's anything you need me to do.
I'd like to see what the advertising says.
That'd be good. I mean, I think we certainly need to have a joint meeting at some point here, I mean, we, we have, we'd like to have a meeting before this went on, but then they had a meeting apparently, we did not, no.
Yeah, Kimberly, Kimberly let me know they did call a special meeting last week, I was not aware they were going to meet, but they did. Get that arranged, so she's, that kind of was the pass through between the board of health and I as far as the advertising went, so.
And then she's like, oh, did send me a new email today with other alternate dates. Um, so we'll have to talk about, just those might work, so.
Alternate dates for?
For meeting.
I guess we just kinda need to know when the interim, you know, the office is here in the building, so.
Well, you know, as I've talked to a few in our past, and, 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 uh, I mean, there is some issues that need to be addressed immediately, like, and a couple of the things that, you know, your well tests and whatever, but, uh, you know, I, I don't know if there's such a thing as I mean, we talked about other counties maybe sharing or doing some of them duties, I mean, can we contract with somebody else even or?
Yeah, I have no idea what direction they were gonna go for interim services, I did mention ECIA as an option to Kimberly just in passing, I don't know if that's I don't, I don't have any idea what direction things are gonna go with. An interim.
Well, Kelly, Kelly Duke Myers coming down today, maybe we could just maybe we could have you come back down and just see if that service might be available through them like they did with our zoning.
Well, we certainly could contact them.
Yeah.
I guess it's all questions that need to be asked when we talk to the board of health. See what our options are.
So I will let Luann can, can you comment that, if you need anything, just let me know, I'll get you a copy of the advertisement. Alright.
Just gonna email that, sure.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, I just sent out the link, I don't know if you seen it, you wanna send it just a little bit, it's on the web.
I had your numbers, I was surprised by them numbers.
Yeah. Alright. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Now, Lisa, now, I may almost begin. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one board proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper. Second. A motion in a second to approve the minutes, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion needed to approve SNK Gas and Food LLC, a cigarette permit for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two.
To approve.
Motion in a second to approve this cigarette permit, all those in favor? Aye, motion carried. And because this is the end of our fiscal year and the beginning of the new fiscal year, I have uh, several resolutions that we need to pass. We need to approve resolution number eight hundred and twenty dash zero six dash twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two appropriations by department.
Second, I have a question or comment, I should say. Um, these, all these resolutions are standard operating procedures for a business, that still has to be done this, this.
This is very standard.
This is, this is nothing new.
This is nothing new, we do it every year and every year.
We stand that we're not doing anything.
No. These are, these are necessary for us to do business and to pass on.
Perfect. A second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Motion needed to approve resolution number eight hundred and twenty-one dash zero six dash twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one. Naming Jackson County's officers bank depositories for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two for the recorder and sheriff designated banks to deposit revenues held in their trust accounts.
So moved.
Second, motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Motion needed to approve resolution number eight hundred and twenty-two dash zero six dash twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one naming Jackson County Bank Depositories for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two. The financial institutions to be depositories for funds collected in the county treasurer's office.
Motion to approve.
Second, motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Motion needed to approve resolution number eight hundred and twenty-three dash zero six dash twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one. For the designation of county bank for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two. Designating McHocata State Bank for county warrants and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second, motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion needed to approve resolution number eight hundred and twenty-four dash zero six dash twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one. For issuing county warrants and allowing the auditor to issue warrants without the prior approval of the board for payment on freight, postage, express, payrolls, water, lights, telephone, contractual services, witness fees, school of instruction, registration fees, and mileage.
So moved. Second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Motion needed to approve resolution number eight hundred and twenty-five dash zero six dash twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one. For interfund operating transfers, authorizing the auditor to periodically transfer sums for the general basics and real services basic funds to the secondary roads fund during twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two budget year.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Motion needed to approve resolution number eight twenty-six dash zero six dash twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one for township officials reimbursement with a compensation rate of twenty dollars per meeting and for clerk's bookwork of twenty dollars per month, not to exceed two hundred and forty per year.
So moved, second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Motion needed to approve resolution number eight hundred and twenty-seven dash zero six dash twenty twenty twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one. For payroll for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
Second, motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion carried. This last motion is something that we've talked about. Um, motion needed to approve resolution number eight hundred and twenty-eight dash zero six dash twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one. To transfer a hundred and fifty thousand from the general basic fund, oh, one thousand, to the capital projects jail fund. Fund thirty-three thousand and two effective on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, motion carried. And my last is I need a motion to approve the appointment from Sheriff Brett Kilburg of John Tomes as his representative to the compensation board. With the term starting July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion in a second on the appointment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. That's all that I have for the board today.
That's it.
So we do have money set back, that's the good news with this transfer today, that's the good news, well, um, of course we have money budgeted for next year, so we've met our benchmark of that three hundred thousand, we have that done and now we will continue to look at what we can do next.
And, you know, we talked about this a month or so ago when you would give us the report and, you know, the department heads were very responsible with their money this year and, uh, we come with the access and I commend them for that.
I agree. That's all that I have for the board. Do we want to? I know last week, um, the auditor was in, or the recorder was in about the door and you were, we weren't was gonna do some checking and possibly get some prices on what it might cost, what extent we might do it. Um, uh, I think we need to get back to her and let her know whether we are or aren't going to move in that direction. But I know when, when we visited, you said you really didn't, and he came down to check the doors and it was going to be much more extensive than we had originally thought it would be.
Yes, yeah, and he said, really, there's the advantage of how we wanna do it, unless we want all the offices.
How she wants it done.
Yes, yeah. Um, in order to have all of the office doors locked and then buzz people in, it'd be a lot more. If we're gonna keep them open like we are now, then basically we're just doing key control. So.
So you're replacing the several thousands of dollars for a key.
Yeah.
Correct. How he explained it to me. He didn't have a, I, he was going to work on a number, he said it would take several hours, hours, this, and well, if this isn't something that you guys wanna proceed with. And I don't think that we wanna keep the doors, like the engineer's door locked to let somebody in.
No, and, and from our conversation earlier, Lisa, you and I were talking, I think the board, um, she could issue keys to that door to whoever needs to be there who um, is a regular visitor, rather than have a fob. Yes, we would do that, and keep in mind that all keys that are given out to anybody, we have them all stamped with a number, so we know that, we know where our key could, you know, where our keys are at. And they can't duplicate them either. That's correct.
But it's not a case of we know what key unlocked it all.
Yeah, we wouldn't know who's necessarily in there.
Okay, so would it be, so what's the option of putting a keypad on that door?
The option we have already is we have cameras on and around.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right.
On the hallway door, we couldn't do a keypad, just the type of door it is.
But the inside door of her new customer service area, we believe we could do.
Murray thought he, yes.
But they are using that to go through to take pictures and stuff in there too, correct or what? So why does that need to be locked?
So customers can't come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see the keys, isn't that the door that they would issue the key to?
No, that's the hall.
I believe she's on the hall door. The, the first door.
Oh, this one, right, from yours? Oh. Honestly, keep in mind, our exterior doors unlock at eight-thirty and lock at four o'clock. So, you know, the rest of this timeframe is within our, our, our public time.
Working.
Working, working hours, right, so there's no way that someone can come in after those, that timeframe to come into her office.
Well, yeah, like Larry said, we, we have camera footage all the time, twenty-four seven, so it's not like, right? And of course, when we're issuing keys, we certainly, that who we're issuing keys to.
It would have, she would have to tell us who she wanted keys issued to. She would have to. But I think that's the direction to go. If she wants to make sure that somebody can't get back there.
Um, I mean, if she's coming in once a week or.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can certainly turn a key.
Yeah, and some people may not want to do that either, they may wanna come through the customer service area, they may not wanna, I would be a poor one when it comes to that, if I were an outside person.
And they still have the option to do that, and if we put a keypad on there, they can still get in there without.
Yes.
Um, taking someone's time off or, or bothering anyone or, yeah, all that they have to do is go to the counter area, which is secure.
Yeah.
Yep. If I'm not in favor of spending that kind of money on that fob. Like, I mean, I know she said she had some books. Some more than you left. But, I mean, I can't see just spending the money because you have it. You know, for something to that effect, like.
I'm in agreement with that.
I guess I don't see how it makes it any more sec, any more secure than what a issue the key would.
Well, basically, that's what Mike said, you're replacing the key with a.
Yeah, in, in her instance, she'd have it locked all the time, you can set the fobs, let's say like my fob, that where I couldn't access it after four-thirty. So whereas I, I had a key that I could access at any time.
She still can't get in the courthouse after four-thirty.
I could, but.
The general public can't get in after four o'clock. Or until eight thirty AM.
You're right. But I relocate.
Now that's scary. Now we know our. I just don't see the necessity of spending that amount of money. Because it just, to me, it just doesn't make a lot of sense.
Uh, I don't see where, if she's talking security wise, I just don't see where it makes a difference either, right?
So what I'm understanding, I just wanna make sure, you would like me to offer keys to her, numbered keys to her outside door, to be signed out by whoever. She sees. She has to approve it. That she would approve. Yes. And we can do that.
And I would still go to the fact that we could put a push button key code on the, on the inside door, that's.
Maybe we, you want me to get rid of the option? Do you wanna do both?
I, I think we could do both, that way that certainly, you know. And if somebody didn't, like you said, didn't wanna, I don't know what the cost of a keypad, doorknob, that can't be.
Murray thought he had one, oh, still around, so.
Yeah.
Have to get mine it.
You know, somebody correct. Now, if somebody can remember four numbers, that's. That they could still come into the, to the lobby area and, and go into their, to their, to examine their books or whatever they need to do, but punch in a keypad, so. It's a matter of another fifteen steps. That's, that's my option. I, I think that door from the lobby into there needs to be locked. If we do that one keypad, I think that's certainly a security issue.
That door does get locked at night, yes. From the out, that outside door.
During the day, when they go into the counter area, they can walk through that asking door.
No, that is locked.
That is, that is locked. Could, could put a keypad on.
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, you know, I don't know what you guys think about that, that's.
I think putting a keypad on that door is fine. Okay, okay, so I will offer the keypad and
And the key.
And the keys, whichever she chooses, or both. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And just kinda getting caught up, where are we at? Is, or at the sheriff's office, is the glass in yet?
The glass and the framework, I believe, are in the door, um, at order door and then the frame wasn't the right size, so it had like the frame, different size.
You know, what the timeframe is to get the door?
I think it was four days or something like that, if I remember already right last time, so it should have been here middle of this week and he had the frame, yeah, they had the other frame out and already redone last week.
Okay.
And the new door was not the right size. Or, that wasn't a new door, we use an old wooden door and they didn't like that for security reasons, they couldn't see from deputy chairs or, for Karens and then for emergency exits, they didn't have a push bar. So they couldn't see from the deputy's desk, one of the deputy's desk, who was in. So they couldn't see from the deputy's desk, one of the deputy's desk, who was in the lobby. If there was any, any presence of danger or not. I, I can see the security door. I mean, they're, they're pricey doors, but that's what they are, you know? Metal door frame with what they call, I don't know what it is, but the striker plate part of it is expensive part. And the wood door that we had in the garage would didn't have that.
Okay.
So, and I don't know, yeah.
So we're getting closer to being done, is what I'm hearing. Okay.
We can do our other reports later.
That's good, yeah, yeah, we can do our other ones later. Hello, Kelly Dumeier.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody?
Good.
We're.
It's the season.
I like that chaotic looking shirt there, you know?
Why?
I figure that the, the next meeting I have, the, the fourth is gonna be over, so I better wear it.
Gotta be in the spirit.
Is, um, Carl and Michelle joining you?
Michelle is not, and Carl is. And I think Carl, I thought I just saw his name. There he is. I think I see his face now.
Okay. Well, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I have a PowerPoint to show you. Um, so is my, let's see, can I share my screen? Yep, I can. Share. There it is. Um, view, review. Slideshow from beginning. Okay, so can you guys see that?
Yes, I can.
All right, so are you ready for me then?
We are ready.
Okay, so, um, I wanted to give you an update on where we were at with the Pocket Neighborhood because we've had all kinds of movement in the last sixty days, meaning, um, a lot of interest in the project. And so, um, I thought it would be a great time just to let you know where we're at with things. Um, this is a, a photo from, um, June of twenty twenty one, actually last week. Um, as you can see, we've, um, got, uh, six houses up and, um, we've got uh, also a house being, being framed. So we are getting there and we're pretty excited about it. Um, our center court, um, sidewalk went in and then the four sidewalks to the homes that are complete went in and, uh, the fifth one, um, will go in soon. We also have our gazebo ordered, um, for our main, uh, area where they'll have gathering space. So that's where you see that, um, cement slab right in the middle, right there. Um, the Habitat home, um, they, they did their house and it looks almost identical to ours, so we're excited about that and they should be closing soon. I think Carl, you had a walkthrough, didn't you, on that last week? Oh, you're on mute, Carl. You're on mute.
We're tent- can everybody hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah, we're tentatively scheduled for July sixth for that closing, so.
Great. And how did the house look? Did you get to go inside?
Very nice, very nice for a, a home that doesn't have basement. It's laid out similar to ours. They did one kind of a where the, uh, they sprinkled in the furnace room area, so that's kind of their storm shelter if need be. So.
That's great. So, uh, this is our overview and then another shot a little bit closer to the homes, um, where you can see, it looks like they started the foundation on lot seven, right, Carl?
Yeah, they've done that last Thursday or Friday.
Okay, great. Um, lot seven is sold, um, and you'll see that a little bit later, so we wanted to get that moving and then so the only, um, two we have left are eight and nine, um, to sell. And this is, uh, multiple pictures here of, of where we're at and how things, how things look. Um, we still have to do the landscaping and the final grade on all of those, um, that are sold, so that would be lots. Um, one, two, three, four, five, and six. Uh, well, one is still under construction, but we would like to do all those final grades at once, so, um, it costs us less money and, and, uh, can get them all done hopefully uh, early this fall. Um, since we've not had a whole lot of rain, I guess it's a good thing that we didn't start too soon, uh, with some of that. Um, this is just the inside of one of the units that's complete. Uh, if you hadn't gone through any of the open houses, it gives you an idea of what they look like inside. And actually, there's much more room than, um, you think in a, you know, thousand sixty-nine square foot home. Um, and, uh, they actually, you know, they really did turn out really very pretty. Uh, we are supplying the appliances, uh, including the washer and dryer for all, all the homes as well in their, in their total purchase price. And then this just so shows what's sold, so, um, all the homes, when they're sold, that means we have a signed purchase agreement on them. And, um, they're five hundred dollar earnest money and then we, uh, which goes towards their purchase. And then we also have, um, their income is qualified, meaning that they are at or below eighty percent of the county median income. And then this here gives you an idea, uh, it's our buyer report. Um, because, um, there's some confidentiality. Once they are all closed, you can look on Beacon and get the names of the individuals, but, um, just to give you an idea, like, one zero one one is the address. That house is sold to just a single individual at eighty percent of the county median. Um, one zero zero nine is sold to a couple. Um, and that house sold for one forty-seven five because it was a spec home, so we knocked twenty-five hundred dollars off on that um, because of all the open houses that we had in it. And, um, same with one zero zero seven, um, that went for one forty-seven five. Another reason too is we picked out all the interior finishings, um, Michelle and, and I, and we picked out all of the, um, the siding and the roofing colors. So those two did not have, um, the options that everybody else had to select everything on the interior and the exterior. So, um, we offered those a, a discount, um, and it's a small family in one zero zero seven. Hey, did, I have a question. I don't wanna, please ask if, when I'm talking, just interrupt me, okay? Um, one zero zero five is a couple. And, uh, one zero zero three sold to an individual. Um, and that one's where the foundation is poured and, and actually that would be like lot one, um, where they're starting to frame it. And, um, then one zero one zero is a couple. Um, and that sold, um, people are living in there. And then one zero zero eight is sold to a small family. Um, so the time that we're estimating, they wanna close on that one by September thirtieth, and that's where you just saw the foundation is in. Um, and then, uh, the individual, they wanna close where the foundation is poured by July thirty-first. Um, hopefully that'll happen. Um, Carl, is that the one? There's one of them moving from Colorado. Is that the one?
Yeah, that would be lot one.
Okay. Lot one is moving from Colorado. Um, and then, um, the one that we just dug the foundation on, um, there, are they local, Carl? One zero zero eight.
Uh, he's actually coming from West Des Moines and it's just a single, a single gentleman.
Okay. And then one zero zero six and one zero zero four, we have yet to sell. However, we are gonna do the foundations on those and he's gonna do those sometime after July sixth. Um, he's scheduled to do them. Uh, and then one zero zero two is the Habitat home and, um, the closing date now has been s- uh, set, so instead of waiting on bank, it's, uh, July sixth. So, um, actually, we do have a mix of households here, which is great. A couple of family, a couple of individuals, a couple of, you know, just single couples, you know, two people. Um, everybody's at or below eighty percent except for the one zero zero two, which had to be a sixty percent buyer, and that's why we partnered with Habitat. Um, so, uh, the realtors are just working hard to get one zero zero six and one zero zero four sold. We are gonna do the foundations, however, as you all are aware, um, the cost of building and materials are, have gone up dramatically. Um, in, since we started this project, by about, uh, four times the cost of what it was when, uh, we first started building. The good news is Marty had purchased all the materials for one zero zero eight. Um, no, is that right, Carl? No, one zero one zero. Which one is the foundation in? One zero zero three. Lot one, um, he has all the materials purchased, so he had done the, the trusses and, and the two by fours and anyway, that had no impact on costs. Um, we're a little concerned about one zero zero eight, six, and four, um, because those costs have gone up about four times what they were. The good news is, um, nothing has gone up when, uh, related to the cabinets, the HVAC, um, the trim, the doors, that all has stayed the same. It's basically our, um, roofing materials, um, and, uh, the two by fours to frame the home. So, uh, hopefully, when he goes to buy those, um, prices have come down or stabilized a little bit, but right now, things are really high and so I'll explain to you what we're gonna do to help combat that in our next steps. Um, we did have to pull Marty off the project until we sold, um, the two spec homes, one oh nine and one oh seven. And I explained to our board that, um, until we close on some homes, um, we had maxed out our construction loan. And so, we could not, um, move forward anymore, um, there in the winter months until those two sold. Um, being a nonprofit, uh, we don't have a whole lot of, um, we have no money. Let's be honest. Um, our money is our construction loan. And so, um, our, the bank, um, had asked us just to kind of slow up because we had no, we couldn't pay Marty, um, uh, when he continued working. And so, once those two were sold and we had contract signing and we closed, um, um, on one, we were able to free up and get Marty back on the project. So to be fair to him, we had said, if you had other work to do, go ahead and do it. Uh, and in hindsight, I wish we didn't have to do that, but because of where we are with our construction loans, we really had no choice.
Well, Kelly, I, I guess I was glad that you told the ECIA board, because I had several people that came up to me and said they heard that Marty left. And I says, he did not leave because he was unhappy. He left because we released him to go do some other work while we were waiting for some of the sales to take place and so, I was glad I knew that.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I report every other month to our EC, ECDC board, so the board is aware of where we're at. You know, the, the closings and the sales were really slow during COVID. It was really bad. Um, and we couldn't do open houses until last February when things, you know, people started getting vaccinated and people felt comfortable coming into homes. Um, and then our first open house, we had a great turnout, even though it had snowed like six or eight inches that day before. Um, but we were able to still do the open house and had a lot of positive feedback. So, um, one of the things too is our federal home loan bank money that comes in, that doesn't come in until the house is actually closed. And so that's twenty thousand dollars a house. So we don't, we basically, that's going towards the construction of the home. So basically, we get reimbursed, um, and we don't get that until they actually have the closing documents and Carl's uploaded everything. And so, um, we were waiting for that on several of the homes that were constructed as well, so you know, part of it is just for us and the, and the cash flow, um, on, on the project. And, you know, all of these projects only have eight thousand dollars a house built in for us for staff time, um, that we were able to code our time to the project. Um, but the amount of time that we put in has been about probably five or six times that amount, so um, that's just money that we've had to bill to ECIA, our Economic Development Programs, uh, in order to, to staff the project, which we didn't expect to make money. We were just happy to do the project, um, and our goal is just to break even.
And Carl, could you give us an explanation as to what your actual role is?
Well, my role is, uh, kind of oversee the day-to-day operations of Marty to make sure that stays on task. I, I do all the work with the home buyers up front for housing counseling. Get them pre-approved, work with them as they go to the bank. Um, I know the realtors help it, help that as well. Um, I work with them through the selection of the materials as far as color, paint colors, cabinet styles, flooring, um, all that. So I'm pretty hands-on from the day they dig the foundation to the day we close with both the, the contractor and the, the home buyers, so.
And Carl has to income qualify every household and certify that for the housing trust fund as well as for the federal home loan bank, um, and I, and Carl's not giving himself enough credit. He's out there, um, you know, uh, sweeping up floors to get houses ready for move-in. He's out there putting shutters on the front of homes. Um, he's out there trying to get rocks out of some of the sites where, you know, owners are complaining that we don't have the final grade done. So, um, he's, he's very hands-on as well. So, um, and, and honestly, he's out there, you know, encouraging Marty, talking to Marty, making sure that he stays on task, finding out if he needs help. You know, there was one point where we had to find some subs for him for drywall and painting, um, because we had some closings right in a row. So Carl's really our, um, construction manager slash, um, housing counselor slash, um, oversight of Marty. So, um, and Marty and Carl have a really great relationship they've developed, um, and, uh, work really well together.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, he's, um, Marty was in last week, um, just so you guys are all aware, we sat down and Carl actually, um, went to Spawn and Rose out in Dyersville, gave them our floor plans for the last three homes that we have to construct, that we don't have materials bought for, and said, how much would this cost, you know, if we bought all the materials here to see if we could help save some money? And then Marty did the same through his suppliers and they came, the cost came within one hundred dollars of each other. Um, so we do know that Marty is not, you know, uh, charging extra on these homes just because costs are high right now. He's given us the real deal. Um, so we, Carl did our own spot check on it. Um, you know, we're talking about twenty thousand dollars more, twenty-one thousand dollars more on, um, materials for, you know, I call it the, the, the two by fours and the, the, uh, floor joists and the
All the, all your framing materials.
All the building materials and, um, it came in this, within a hundred dollars at Spawn and Rose. So what we're trying to do is we told Marty, let's let things hopefully stabilize a little. Um, we have to get lot one zero zero eight going because that sold and this person is moving to the community. Um, so we might have to pay more on that one, um, but hopefully things will stabilize a little. Um, Marty did say that he's heard that things should start to stabilize, not go back to normal, but he's hearing by September, um, maybe we'll see things just come down slightly, so that's what we're, we're hoping and praying for. Um, if not, we've got a contingency plan. Um, and that's not to ask you guys for money or to give us the land, so don't worry, I'm not gonna ask for a handout. Um, so what we're going to do is, um, federal home loan bank, their deadline has been extended, so that's the twenty thousand dollars per house. That was supposed to end on June thirtieth. They've extended it to December of twenty twenty-one. Um, and they're doing that because of COVID and the high costs of materials right now. Um, knowing that, you know, things have slowed up. Um, we requested Iowa Finance Authority to extend our zero percent loan to Macau State Bank, so they have given us a six hundred thousand, um, dollar construction loan at zero percent, which gets passed on to Macau State, uh, Savings Bank so that they can give us a two percent construction loan, because originally the loan was gonna be five percent. So this actually buys down our loan by three percent, um, on interest. We're applying for additional housing trust fund grant, so right now, um, we need money for our landscaping, fencing, lighting, benches, and plantings. We have some grant money to do two trees for each home. Um, I do have thirty thousand dollars budgeted for the landscaping, uh, for total. And, um, so far, the sidewalk was about twenty thousand, um, to each home in that center sidewalk. And so, um, we have about ten thousand dollars left there. And so we have about ten thousand dollars left there. So we are applying for the Housing Trust Fund to do, to reimburse us for a lot of that landscaping, the fencing, the lighting, the benches and the planning. And that way, if the homes are going to be twenty-one thousand dollars extra, we will be able to utilize some of our reserve. I also have about fifty thousand dollars total within each house that I have backed for contingency. So that should cover some of our extra expense-wise. And then, you know, we've asked Marty to do what he can do and, and coming and meeting us partway on some of those additional costs as well. Lot one is supposed to close by nine thirty, lot seven by nine thirty, eight and nine are spec homes. We really want those sold. So if we can get those in our system is sold by December eleventh. And Marty thinks he can get an additional one of those built and closed by December eleventh. If we still have one left to close, I think they'll, as long as we have a buyer in the system, we'll be able to extend that beyond December eleventh. The landscaping will occur this summer with our existing funding and grants. So I don't want to do it when it's this dry, but as soon as we can get that landscaping in, we will. And then September of twenty twenty-one, we do have a homeowners association. We are going to get all the homeowners together because we'll have more houses closed by then and start their homeowners association. We have been collecting seventy-five dollars a month per house that we have an account for. And they, per month. And they will be then managing that themselves when it comes to the lawn mowing and when it comes to the snow removal. So we, we will get that association moving. And then once eight homes have been closed on, we back out of it and they manage that association themselves. And one of the biggest things I need to say is thank you for your support, your patience and your partnership. This has been a learning experience for all of us. This is our first pocket neighborhood and the first one in the state for people that are at eighty percent or below the county median. It does require a lot of handholding for Carl's sake. It does require a lot on our staff side for just oversight in general. And then the realtors, the realtors are working very diligently to sell these homes and have been doing an awesome job of just brainstorming what they can do, of trying to find people. Their partnership has been critical to this project's success. And we could not have done this project without the, the support of the county. And I think it just shows a testament of when you work together, what great things can happen. So as I've always said, coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress. And as we've seen, I think our working together has been a success. Because we do have a beautiful development in Macau that I think in the end, we're all going to be very proud of. Not that we haven't had a lot of growing pain through this, but I think it's an awesome, awesome project. So I would love to answer whatever questions you may have and any other suggestions you may have.
Mary or Mike, do you have any questions?
No, that covered it pretty good. Thanks.
Does the median price income change then from year to year? I know we've been at this for a couple of years. So that goes with the, yeah, okay.
Yeah, every year in April, the Department of Housing and Urban Development publishes new guidelines. And this year, actually, they went down by a couple hundred dollars, which is the first we've ever seen for that to happen. But yes, the guidelines do get looked at and it's, you know, set by HUD for each county based on the size of the household. And so they do have to income qualify in order to be able to move in. And then that's checked by the Federal Home Loan Bank as well. And Carl does that process. And we've had people that the realtors have sent us that have been just over the income guidelines. We had a, wasn't it a teacher Carl that was coming from Davenport that was just over that we were really hoping to get?
And just FYI, once they qualify, then they're, you know, I don't want, they're, they can, their income can increase. So they're, we're not holding them back from succeeding in life or succeeding in their job. It's just once they qualify, they are good to go from that point forward.
Okay, anything else? Sounds good. Thank you very much. It's
You've done. Thank you, thank you. And at some point, we will have a great celebration out there when the gazebo's up just to celebrate the, the project and the success. So we will do that, but we're, we're waiting until, until it's more beautiful than it is now.
The white fence goes up, right?
Well, those white picket fences, you know, that's one of my big things. So yeah, once those are up, we'll celebrate the picket fences.
Okay. Thank you Sally, thank you.
Thank you. Pardon?
Is it raining in Macau right now?
Well, the window is wet.
Okay, well, we want, we want to keep Marty working so we don't want it to rain, you know?
Amen.
All right, take care. Thank you.
Thank you. She was going to come in. Well, as far as boards and commissions, we had our early childhood Iowa meeting yesterday and it was Gwen's last day as chair, as our CEO. And she's going to stay on until September, September helping. But she will be, then she said she might apply to be on the board. So we'll see how that all works out. But we had our first meeting. I think she said the last meeting we had face-to-face was in February, a year and a half ago. So first time, I mean, otherwise we're just a little line across the screen. So.
Yeah, it's good. I feel like it's a good feeling again when you can talk to people face-to-face. She's done a huge asset to that.
Yep, she has. And last week, I got a, a, a letter from the Department of Human Services that our chairman of our human, our consul resigned effective immediately. So next, next, next week, the eighth is our meeting. So I, I don't know why. He was, he's a pastor from up in Waverly. But I think I have it here. Mark Anderson, this is his name, just said a letter to the governor saying that it would have been an honor or privilege to serve, that, that he was resigning from that position. So they'll have to have somebody appointed to take his place. And then he's chair right now. So they'll have to select a new chair. So they said that would be done in our meeting next week.
Outing last night at Monticello, there's no dam just south of town. We went out there and took pictures for the Hoover Water Shit Authority with all the volunteers that did the water sampling. And then we went to a pizza place and had pizza. So, and we're winning the award to be given, I think July thirteenth or something by the governor for volunteers for the state of Iowa. And we won that award. So these pictures were for that.
And that's for the water testing. And I was, last week I sat in on, on the meeting that they had with Camp Courageous. And that's kind of exciting too. They had a parcel of land donated and it joins the camp. And I'm talking with different entities about the University of Iowa and it was Iowa State involved too to have students come and come up with designs and what, how they might use it. But I thought it, and it, it's on the Macau River too. So, but I thought that was pretty exciting.
Not so exciting is the dishwasher at the care facility. The motor went out a bit. So Jared had taken it in to get it rewound and tried to get it rewound, but it was too far gone. So they had the process of ordering one. They talked over, we're not sure what the cost is yet, but that is one of the fifty-fifty items. So just an update. The septic field has not been mowed at all. They're in there and Marty's been working on the sheriff's door, of course. So the pipes are not cut off and covered yet. So it's been, I think we're going to give Jared a lesson on the utility tractor and the brush more. And he's going to do the septic deal with that till we can get landscaped out, smoothen up the mow with the mower. So. We need to, I think Jared needed a lesson on the tractor. I mean, it's not that complicated, but he feels comfortable that somebody show him how to operate that. Willing to do that.
They're a little bit different. So.
And last night, we had our Together We Build meeting. And I sat there for a while because they were talking about different things. And then they had we discussed your trip to the hospital with John. And what, what was there and what we might want and what they might want. They were listing all these things that they would like to have. And I was sitting there thinking, well, some of those things are what we want too. And so anyway, discussion. And then I think it was Scott Chen that said, well, who has first dibs on this? And they said, the jail does. And I, I thought, and that's when I kind of went but it was, it was an interesting meeting last night.
It was a briefly with Amber yesterday about the same thing.
We'll see what happens. So yeah. Anything else from committees or boards?
Well, conservation decided not. We were talking about a little land trade thing possibly. And we did look at the other, there's some nice features to it. The other that we would trade was worth more and it had a nice building on which we use our stores. So we just didn't but if he's ever interested in selling it in the future, seven acres, we would be interested in probably buying it from him because it connects right there. Give another access.
So is that by the path keeper properties?
Are they doing the work on that deck that we talked about a year ago or so?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I think he has a bid on it. I think we're just waiting until the contractor can get there. I know there's money came to that property and, and that money will be used. I think it was fifty-two thousand came with that property or sixty, somewhere around there. But so we do have the money.
To do it.
To do it, yeah.
It finds somebody to do it. There you go.
There's a problem everywhere.
Yeah, there is. There certainly is. Okay, next item on our agenda is Sally Davies from NEI three A, from the board. She took Gwen's place on that board. So come on up.
Good morning. Have no idea what I'm doing here, just so you know. So I'm going to tell you what I know.
You have to take a test.
Okay. I said a test, but I'll try. Now, as far as reporting what's going on, the biggest things right now, there's been some transfers and things in different areas as far as properties. But the, the big news is the, the senior meal sites, the congregant sites are going to be opening up in the next couple of weeks. So here locally, Shannon, Shannon Weber is the one that oversees Macau and Bellevue. She's kind of acquired both of those and that will be the twelfth. She's talking about the twelfth of July. She was waiting for a few documents to come back in. They have to have a gambling license because of the bingo that's played and then a couple of other things for licensure purposes with the food. Hot food, hot meals have started delivering two weeks ago. So five days a week, they're delivering hot meals. When they open the, the Congress, Congregate Sites, Bellevue hasn't, she didn't know a date yet. She was still working out some details with, with Jen at NEI three A and the, the location in Bellevue. It may not be a five-day-a-week thing. It may just be the three days a week or something like that. They're not one hundred percent certain. They're still working through those details. So that's the biggest things that are happening.
I guess that was Larry and I were in, probably Mike too. We had people coming up and wondering, is the senior center ever going to open back up? They're kind of at a loss for things to do that. And I know the, the quilt club and some of them that have always met down there. And so that's why I called you because I just thought, you know.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. Yeah. But Shannon is, has indicated that the, the meal site piece is all she can really talk about right at the moment. As far as the, the rest of the things, I'm not one hundred percent clear yet as she hasn't shared that yet. I think as she kind of works through it is where it's going to come. But I'm thinking by the end of the month, you're going to see a lot more activity there.
I think that people are just
So anxious.
It's like us, we're anxious to get out in the real world, right? And I was just telling them before you got here, I was at a meeting last night and it had been a year and a half since we met face-to-face. And we met face-to-face last night just because the director is leaving and we had a little party for.
Right.
But you know, first time I saw their shining faces for a year and a half. Over the screen.
Understand that completely. Yeah. So everybody's kind of going stir crazy. But that's, that's the exciting news. And that's, that's really, it seems that senior wide, the, the DeWitt sites opening up the middle of the month, next month. And so are the other ones that aren't even in our counties. So coming out of milestones and, and the other area and AEGs, they're all doing that in the middle of the month. So.
Okay, my next question is, are you glad you accepted this appointment? Sure, curious.
I enjoy knowing what's going on and I enjoy being able to help people connect the dots. It kind of keeps you in the loop. So yeah. It's a little bit different than what I had anticipated, but it's not bad. It's just getting used to it.
I was just curious because sometimes, you know, we all enter these boards with no, no conceived idea of what it's going to be.
Yeah.
Until you get there. And a lot of times it's a lot different than you, it's going to be.
And it is. And we haven't met, like you said, no face-to-face yet. It's still through Zoom. And I struggle to stay focused when it's a Zoom meeting and my phone rings. So I really got to shut the phone off and try really a lot harder than if I were there.
Well, we really appreciate you accepting the position. And if you could come in maybe a couple of times a year and just let us know. If there is a problem, let us know what that problem is so that we can work with you to try to solve it.
Sure, absolutely. I'd love to.
Are the meals prepared and built then? Like they, and then they brought here and that's, and that's working out or is that?
That seems to be working out quite well. They have all of the equipment down there and the team is down there. I'm just not certain how, the last time I was in there, where the congregant meal site was, is all of their warehouse. To be able to, they moved everything up there because everything had to go out delivered everywhere and nobody was eating in congregant. So they have some work to do down there to get it cleaned up to be able to do that. So I haven't been there in months. So hopefully I can pop in there today and see how they're doing. That's my goal.
Anybody else have any questions for Sally?
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming in.
You bet.
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you want to announce who you hired?
Oh, yes, Erin Erickson. Moved here from, originally from Missouri to Washington State to Colorado and now they're here.
And what position are we talking?
Look over the water.
Shit coordinator.
Coordinator.
And it sounded like at the meeting, how thrilled everybody was to finally have a coordinator.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, you know, we read the, the RFP or whatever on what we're looking for. It's like, okay, where do you find somebody that does this? It just seems so out there. And then all of a sudden, here she is, it's like, that's it.
Well, hearing them, hearing her credentials the other day at that meeting.
Very exciting.
Incredible.
Yeah.
This just, I mean, this fits her like a glove.
Mm-hmm, it really does. And there's a little extra perk too, which I mean, wasn't part of it, but her husband is overseas sustainable farming and stuff. And that's what he teaches, all that kind of stuff. And I'm like, wow, that kind of, you know, they're both in the same neighborhood with making this work. That's exciting to have that background. And there, I guess they have a daughter that I think's seven or eight. And she said something about, okay, that's row cropping out there and they're doing that. So she's, you know, they talk about, yeah, so even the kids are involved in, in how, what's going on with it.
But it sounded like she's pretty excited to get back to this, this neck of the woods.
They were concerned, they, they had several fires out there. And I guess they got pretty close a few times, just, it makes you wonder.
And she talked about forest fires and all of that and stuff.
I got one from.
Burning people out.
My sister-in-law, Carol, was back late from here. They live, they live in Colorado, Jim's back here and she's out there and she was going to Las Vegas. And they had a rock slide on Interstate seventy and closed right before last, closed down the half of the highway. Very next morning, another one closed the complete thing down. She said, what normally would take her forty minutes to go where she was going, five hours and she still wasn't there. So all this traffic's trying to reach out and figure out what the heck's going on.
Oh, my goodness.
Like two hundred some foot of rock went down on the road. They still don't know if anybody's under it, that means it's just.
And that condo in Florida.
Yeah.
Oh, every day, you know, I think this morning on the Today Show, they said, so far, I think they found five deaths.
Nine.
Was, was it nine?
They're up to nine now.
But, oh my god.
You know, a hundred, that's crazy.
And a hundred and forty-some still missing. You look at that, it just, oh, I can't imagine how anybody could survive. And I would hate to be in your shoes, having to go try to find them. So is there any other business to come before the meeting today?
My function adjourned.
Just hope everybody has a happy and safe fourth. Meeting is adjourned.
Happy fourth.